We'll call the meeting door at 6:35. Thank you all for attending. We'll start by saying that...
Recording in progress.
...Americanly, or the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a true republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
So as with other meetings, we move into public comment. Public comment is mainly for those issues that are not already on the agenda. So we would ask that you respect that. But if you do have something that you would like to share, feel free to come up, state your name, and make your comments. This is relative to...so this is on the agenda? Right, but this is...
Are you saying you have a public comment that you've written?
But it's on the agenda. This is relative to the co-op, correct?
Yes.
So it's on the agenda, so it won't be read at this time. It'll be read when we have that come up under the agenda. All right? Anyone else have any comments? Any input? Hearing done. We'll move on to item number four, which is we will recess for a liquor control discussion.
Motion to recess for liquor control.
Motion second. We'll move on to the liquor control. Nicole, do you want to join us? Thank you for putting the report together.
You guys are okay. You guys are okay. Yeah, you can stay there. Yeah. Just do it.
Hello, everyone. Tonight, I am reading a report. Our new char restaurant is going into federal. This is London Messier, Kristen Messier, and Nate Messier. In your packets, you guys should have had their application for first, third, and their outdoor. They also have their IRS number, written meals, their liability insurance, and also what is certificate for reserve treatment. So we are asking tonight that you will please still hang meet up room so we can get their liquor license rolling and they can open up very, very soon.
We ask it all the time. Familiar with both state and local expectations?
Yes. I have been emailing with London, and she has a copy of our liquor requirements from the city, and she's also been looking at the state for all of that as well.
Any expectation on an opening date?
Hopefully December 1st.
December 1st?
Yeah.
So you folks, you're operating this. The owner's going to be in LLC.
Yes.
And you know as the LLC changes, Nicole has to be aware of what's going on if there's new members brought in or members leave.
Yeah.
She has to know that stuff so that we know what's going on as well.
Yep.
And you've also got a permit, you're requesting a permit for outside liquor consumption. Is that the place one down from you inside the courtyard?
It's the courtyard, yeah. It's attached to the building.
And what type of entertainment are you going to have in there?
It'll kind of broke up into two sections. It'll be the outside dining area, and then there's the event side.
Okay. Is that an event area?
I would say it is, yeah.
So if that's an event area, do you contemplate having bands or music or stuff like that there?
Yes.
And how are you going to handle the noise from that?
I'd imagine the way they did in the past, and by just staying within town.
But because there was some problems in the way they did in the past. So my question to you is how are you going to handle it now, going forward?
Well, it's really, in the future anyway. Right now, we're focusing on the inside, and spring will be a renovation for the outside. Mainly focused on, we're kind of doing everything in phases. We've been doing some construction and renovation on the inside, and the spring will start on the dining side of the courtyard, and then we'll move to the events.
Okay, so could you just be specific so people know what those expectations were?
Just noise after 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night? I mean, now, your application is you're going to stay open until legal closing, correct?
No, I think 11 o'clock is...
Okay.
I think we're just kind of shooting high to make sure that we stay always within any expectations that we have for ourselves.
So would we expect then that any music or entertainment that you have out there will stop around 11 o'clock at night?
Absolutely, 10 o'clock, yeah. I never expect, I never expected it to go later than that.
Okay. That doesn't mean that it can't happen.
Right.
It just means if that's the way you put it in your application, there's an expectation from the city that that's what's going to happen?
Interesting.
And if it's not, then you should let Nicole know so you can get a special permit from Chip or somebody in the city to say that you're going to have an event that night.
Sure. We made the future look into like a conditional usage for particular nights if somebody wanted to have a wedding reception, and they did ask to go a little bit later.
Okay.
So I guess we'll cross that path and get to it.
Just as long, I think as long as you keep an open communication with the city, it's going to run very smoothly.
Absolutely.
And I hope, Tim, I had them put the outdoor consumption in here now just to get it done properly.
Yeah.
So we could talk about it, because I know that you're quite ready for it, but I didn't want to have to have them come back.
And that's a, that's a good strategic move to do that, yeah, yeah. I'll make the motion to accept the liquor control application, Mr. D.
I'll second it.
We have the motion second from Trudy. Any other questions of the applicants?
Just out of curiosity, can you just tell us a little bit about your restaurant?
Steak seafood Americana, I guess, really, and we're just looking for...
Steak?
Yeah. We, like I said, we've done a little renovation inside, so we're, we really want to break it up a little bit and have the main dining area, which has always been there, be more formal to semi-formal, you know, anniversary, stuff like that, you can have that feeling. Then the barroom is actually more segregated now, so you get that more casual lounge you feel from the bar without the interaction of actual, the dining, the seating dining, the sit-down dining area, you know what I mean?
Yep.
And then once we get the outside stuff done, we're hoping to have a bar out there as well, just to give it a little bit more atmosphere, so.
Have you owned restaurants in the past?
I had, I owned a small bar and grill in the past, so I do have some.
Nice.
And London's in the restaurant industry for...
Great. Well, good luck.
We have a good hold on.
Chad has a question.
And as the owners, are you guys going to do your DLC too?
Probably, yeah, probably just for training purposes, but I mean...
Yeah, I just, I guess it doesn't hurt to have it.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. At least go through it, even though you're going to be the manager of the place.
No, I think it's a good thing.
Just go through it once.
Sure.
Yeah.
I have done it in the past, like I said. I have my bars.
I don't.
I'm glad you guys do that, just on top of my life.
Any further questions, comments? Hearing done. We have a motion and a second on the floor to recoup the liquor license. While we wait, David, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing done. Motion passes. Thanks for coming in and thanks for doing business in St. Elmans.
See you all there.
See you December 2nd.
12-1. Motion move out of liquor control and into open again to other business. Is there any other business?
Goodnight, guys. Thanks for coming in. Nicole, any other business that we want to cover?
No, I'm sorry.
Motion move out of liquor control. Second.
Motion second to move out of liquor control and resume the council meeting. Everyone say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Hearing done. We're back in the council meeting. To item number five, St. Elmans Creamery Appeal of Health Code Notice. For panels, if you want to come up, I'm not sure the city have a presentation.
City's got a memo, but we can do that one out.
Okay, so if you guys want to step up?
I have, I just have to run upstairs, grab my reading glasses.
Do you want me to go get them for you?
But you guys can do introductions, and I'll be right back.
Well, congratulations on the resolution of your labor dispute. I'm glad it worked out well for everybody.
Yeah, it's fulfilling.
We waited.
You want to wait for me, right?
Yeah.
We're done.
It's all settled.
So guys, introduce yourselves.
Great. Peter Raymond, was GD for a long game, you're on behalf of Creamery and the mess.
Panis Leicas, St. Elmans, of course, I know what's going on.
Welcome back. Just to recap, we're in the second month, right? And we exceeded two months of the health order. You, last, a month ago when you're here, you had shared a number of initiatives you were going to be working on. Sort of why don't we start there and see where those have taken us?
Yeah, so as we discussed at the last hearing, the Creamery was in discussions with a odor consultant, RHP. They've now been on site. City employees were in part of those discussions about putting together a monitoring plan. There are now six monitors around the perimeter of the property. They've been collecting data. They collect data about every 20 to 25 seconds. They've been actually collecting data since October 3rd.
October 3rd.
You know, so we're still in the early stages. There's the total, it was going to be 30 days, so there's about three weeks left in what is planned. We've gotten some initial, an initial report back from the consultant, you know, kind of generally, and Panis can explain in some more detail, but generally, it's, you know, the levels are non-detect at the property line, or if they are a very low detection, and it's for a very short period of 20 to 25 seconds, and then back to zero. In addition to that, you know, the Creamery is doing its own, continued its own monitoring, essentially up until recently, until those monitors were in place. So, Panis, you, there's a, we do have a summary report from the consultant that I can share with you all. So why don't I hand that out, and you can explain that?
Yep.
And make the chart. So, here, so I'm going to pass those down. And I'll hand this, well...
Two different reports?
Well, the second document is coming to you, it's kind of just a chart, more visual, that Panis can explain, but it'll make sense. So you should have essentially kind of a one and a half page, and then there's, there's an email, that's one document, and then there's a single page with kind of three graphs. So Panis, why don't you go ahead and explain?
So I'm going to start with the consultant's response of initial analysis. This is again from October 3rd to October afternoon, October 9th, is the time that I pulled the data from the units and sent them to, them to be analyzed. The report is split in three sections. The first one is what the air monitoring development plan was, basically how we actually deployed it. The second one is what the data analysis was, and what did the consultant do to actually clean the data. And by clean the data, I mean the bump test that we do usually creates a level of measurement there, and so that's a false measurement, because we're actually introducing the gas to make sure that the meter is working properly as it should. And then, as Peter mentioned, every measurement happens every 20 to 25 seconds roughly, and those are being recorded in the machine and then downloaded in the, in the program. The third section is the result sections. As you can see from the report, so far, at least not so far, sorry, until October 9th, we did not see any detectable orders except for one reading, that was October 8th at 8:30 a.m., and that was a .4 parts per million. I want to emphasize also that when he says a single reading, that means 20 seconds was recorded, there was zero before and after of that reading. For the measurements of methyl mercaptan, the report states that's about 8% of the monitor period, and there was a single measurement of .2 parts per million made on October 8th again at 1:00 or 2:00 p.m. Again, that's a single measurement of 20 seconds of that. It goes though further into explaining what the .1 parts per million, which is the 8% of the monitoring period, which I'm, I'm going to just let you guys read the last, kind of like, not the last, but before the last paragraph of that, which actually states that .1 parts per million below the limit of quantification, which was greater than the sensitivity. So based on our initial analysis, the consultant states that if the measurements of .1 may likely be less than .1, we're just getting background plus what is actually in the area. The second graph, so, sorry, so the second item that we actually provided you with is basically a representation of that data for October 9th and October 8th. One note to say is that October 9th is closest to the Y-axis, so closer to number one, and then goes to your right, October 8th. I pointed out the bump on the line, that is the .4 parts per million, and I pointed out the sensor test. These data are directly from the machine. I have not altered or changed what the, basically what the consultant did during that. The first sensor, sensor one, is the sensor that has the mercaptan, sensor also the methyl mercaptan. Sensors two and three are the closest to Federal Street. The sensor one is closest to the actual tank, that's the equalization tank or the cement tank that is actually seen from one side.
Panis, just the, the numbers...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just, can you just explain what?
Yeah, so the numbers is basically the actual measurements, and so it's easier for me to identify which measurement this by going down the list of numbers and saying, okay, so I'm looking for measurement 8,500, so I can go to that one rather than just having the dates, because every date has about, you know, 4,000 to 5,000 units there.
And the reason this, these dates were relevant is these are the dates that were the, kind of the two readings above, above zero were, no, there. And, and so, you know, and these are, this is initial data. We haven't had a full report from the, from the consultant at this point, just because of the early stage of that. So before we move on, I just wanted to pause and see if that explanation, you've kind of understanding what the chart's showing. And these are the, the first box, the sensor one measurements, they're very small bump. You'll see where that, that 0.4 ppm arrow, there, there is a faint, a small bump up on the line. It's very small, just in scale, so visually, it's, it's a little hard to see, but that's what that's meant to represent.
So this is three weeks of measurement?
This is...
10 days.
Two, which one are you asking for?
Any of these.
This is two days only. These are the days that the consultant found so far from October 3rd to October 9th afternoon, that there was a .4 parts per million, hydrogen sulfide, and a .2 parts per million methyl mercaptan, single measure.
So can we assume from that then that every other day, there was zero ppm?
Afternoon, October 9th, sorry, up to the afternoon of October 9th, yes.
Okay.
And we don't assume, we know that there is zero.
So if this were stretched out, because it's really condensed?
Yeah.
So if this were stretched out to be the size of this room, then would there be a lot of this going on?
It would be one...
Or would it be a straight line?
It would be a straight line with one bump at .4 on October 8th at 10:30 for H2, and it will be 8% of the line will be a bump of .1 methyl mercaptan.
Okay, which is below the acceptable range.
And I think to Panis's point, is the, is the consultant, the .01 from mercaptan is the lowest it can read, so it may be a lower value, but it reports is .1, so it could be between that. It's just the sensitivity of the monitor is such that that's the low, it's either zero or .1 on the monitor.
We believe these are the only two chemical compounds that could be causing the smell and odor potentially come from that source, if it was.
Based on the reports that we're getting, we believe those are the two compounds that we have to measure.
Because those are only two the machine would pick up, but if there are other compounds present, we're not looking for those now.
These sensors?
That was my question. Can these pick up other substances, gases, whatever?
At the current configuration, no.
Okay.
They are specific for that. We need to get different sensors for that.
Because we had two complaints on October 6th at 8:22 in the morning and 3:18 in the afternoon. Those, those sensors didn't pick up those two. So the question is like, what was the smell on October 6th? If it wasn't these two compound, whatever you call them, no scientist, if it wasn't, yeah, if it wasn't the, yeah, what would it have been?
I think what we don't know is, based on the reports, like, there's nothing detectable coming from the, at the property line of the Creamery at that, at that one. That's what we...
Of those two things?
Mm-hmm.
Or those two potential smell...
Go ahead.
Gases? Yeah, gases, I guess.
How did we get to the point that the issue was hydrogen sulfide? Who made that decision?
Hydrogen sulfide was presented by the consultant in the meeting, and I was there together with Matt Mohar, and we, based on the reports that we were getting from the city at the time, those are the two compounds that we basically decided that they're most likely to be causing it.
So you plan on running this another 21 days?
The current contract is for 30 days, and started on October 3rd, and then whatever that means.
Do these machines have the ability to register other compounds?
Not with the common sensors that they have.
Would you have, is it easy enough to buy new sensors and put them in, or would it be an entirely new system?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Just curious. Would either of those compounds be smelled in rotten milk?
I don't know.
And these sensors are being placed around the main campus, or is it on the other property as well?
It's on the property line.
But you guys own the property across the room, right? The truck lot as well?
No, we're not, yeah, on the property.
Okay.
So I think, I think probably difficulty that we're having is that we see your sensitive data, which is good, and we're trying to reconcile here how we have no spikes on days that we have reports of smells. You know what I'm saying? Like, that's, so either we're not testing for the right gas, or the sensors aren't working, or there's some, another problem entirely, I'm not sure. But when you get two reports on the same day, and there's no sensor, that means there's a disconnect somewhere. So, I mean, I think, at least I myself, I want to, you know, the Creamery has been a part of our community forever. It's something that we want to keep in the community, but this has been going on a lot, in my opinion, it's been going on a long time. And now we have sensitive data that doesn't match up with what we're getting for anecdotal, what we're getting for complaints. So I think we're at the point where, you know, if we're going to give more time and try to cool this down, we got to have like a plan. And this, the sensors are great, but it's not lining up with the complaints. And so I don't know if this consulting firm can come up with other tests or something else that we should be looking at, or if we need to get an engineer in there to look at the plant, or what we got to do, but there's got to be, and I, in my mind, we got to leave with a new plan, or we got to do the order.
Did you trace back on the day that there was a .4 ppm? Can it be attributed to anything that happened at the plant? Any...
Nothing happened at the plant during that day.
Unloading of the slug.
And again, that .4 was for 20 seconds.
Right.
It's hard for me to...
But there was nothing that you could trace it back to that might have...
And that was what day? The 6th?
October 8th.
The 8th.
At 8:00, 8:30 in the morning.
Yeah, the 6th then. Nothing went off on the 6th. We have those two complaints.
Well, there's two complaints, and then Don Murray and I were there too. Yeah, the 6th. And we could... So that's where it's confusing, right? That's where there's the disconnect. What time did we go through there? 10, noon?
About, it was almost noon. Yeah. And it was right by the...
We came up on this.
Yeah, up all the street, where the driveway goes into the, where the trucks are. Yeah.
I'd almost feel better about it if the sensors went off that day.
Right.
At least we knew we're testing for the right stuff.
Right, yeah.
Marty, you want to bring into the discussion, were you involved in any of the installation, any conversations? Was it just Matt? For the most part?
From the city, at least.
Panis, Kirkman, from our whip. At this point, we don't know what the consultant's ability to test for other, like, these, these are the two common, you know, common measures. So I think at this point, we can, we can certainly find out if it's possible and what the timeline would be. We just, you know, these are, based on, these are kind of the two, two of the common compounds that are, H2S is, and then the propane smell is the mercaptan, so those are kind of the two that are most common to be tested for, based on our understanding. So, you know, that's not to say, I think there's, there's a little bit of a disconnect between, you know, reading through some of this of a complaint, a smell of an odor, part of the problem, you know, we've had in some of the clay blocks from the city is, you know, they're, either we don't get them at the time, or we get them in the future, so it's hard to then pinpoint what's going on at the plant. Now that the monitoring is played in place, we'll be able to look back at that data, but at the same time, that someone smells something is, might not be directly attributable, you know, there's, people, people can smell from various different levels, so what is, you know, or from other sources, whatever it is, but, you know, it's, it's hard to pinpoint directly, like, you know, we're getting zero and someone smells something. They might smell something, but it still might not be detectable, so, you know.
Do you, is it true that your employees have relocated their lunchroom to a different onsite building because of the smells at the plant?
The lunchroom was, I've been at the Creamery for two years, the lunchroom has not been relocated.
Has not been?
Has not been relocated.
In the last two years?
What has happened is the employees need to use the break room, not the maintenance shop to have their lunch, for good manufacturing practices.
You've seen the letter from the...
From your workplace.
Right, you see, from, okay.
Yes, I remember.
Can you respond to that? Just respond to that in general?
In general?
Other than the lunchroom?
Go for it.
Just now told us about it.
Can I, from the lawyer side of me, when I read a, a letter like that, you know, I just have to raise the issue of, you know, it being trouble of hearsay, so, you know, we're from, you know, we're in a court or something, that, that may not be admissible, but there are, you know, I think going through with panels, that there's concerns about kind of the statements, and so maybe you can, you know, pick a few.
So to your point, I'm going to go very like high level, but if you want specific answers, I will definitely answer them. The system is automated fully. The, there are certain aspects that are kind of like manual when we want, like, like The, there are certain aspects that are kind of like manual when we want like valves, when we need to discharge during load up. But that is the only items. The copper parts, which are actually bronze parts, they would, that brown hole, they will turn because of wet environment. That's naturally happens with bronze.
Can you go back up to that other paragraph?
Yeah.
The EQ tank, is that like equalization tank? Is that what that means? Okay. And this is saying, the EQ tank is open to the air with a slab over it. And DFA attempted to seal the gaps to contain odor. And the carbon filters are not working. The moisture comes into the filters, making them wet, which increases the odor. Can you comment on that?
The carbon filters are meant to be on a wet environment. They can work up to 80% of moisture. They have an automated relief valve for extra water that is there. And there is usually a gap on the bottom of the filters that collects that and then discharges it. That's automated also. The EQ tank is not open to the air. There is, I'll try to explain the best as I can. There is an L kind of like form with a pin. The slab goes on top. There is a material, a similar material between the L shape, the pin and the slab that gets compressed all around. And then that is epoxy.
That's a cover?
That is the whole floor. What I'm assuming, the gentleman was saying there was when we actually sealed any pipes that were coming out that were part of the initial design, we just sealed those. But that happened in February. And since then, we have basically changed our system to control these odors. The old system was working fine. I didn't know automation. There was automation on the old system too. Obviously was not working fine, otherwise we wouldn't have spent this much money to actually do that. Current automation is there. And actually, I, there is four people, including myself, that have direct vision to the system 24/7 through our phones. It's actually sending us alerts if something happens. And both myself and especially the two people that we have running it have complete access to that from their home even. They don't even have to drive in if necessary, if that's an emergency. The bronze copper parts, I already addressed that. I'm not sure about the next statement about lung disease and stuff like that. That's something that a medical professional should probably be more, better to understand, to answer that. I'm not sure why he mentioned about the cause of the odors is the dissolver flotation system. I'm not sure where he's getting that. That's again, nothing in opinion. And the lunchroom, we relocated, we did not relocate that one in the last two years. And the unit has been there only almost one year now in November. And we do have two primary operators, which are part of our agreement with the state. One is a specialist, which is actually a hundred percent on that. The other one is a supervisor, which is the maintenance supervisor. Then it's the maintenance engineer, who is on top of that. And then me also.
When are those two people working? Every day?
Yeah.
From 8:00 to 5:00?
Yeah.
Would they have been working?
Well, one of them works from 4:00 AM to 5:00 noon. And the other one works from 8:00 to 9:00.
Would they have been working on 10:06?
Yes, they would.
At?
8:20.
At 8:22 and 3:18?
Yes.
They would have been working then?
One of them, both of them will be there at 8:00 and one of them will have been there at 3:00.
Have you smelled the odor down there? Have you smelled it yourself?
Close to the tongue, yes, I have.
Counsel, I may have any questions? So we're going to move to, if you guys want to summarize anything, sharing some.
Yeah, sure. Just briefly, I'd like to, I mean, I think back to the smells of odors. You know, I know there's a statement in Mr. Cloud's letter about after the DRV hearing last week, odor is being smelled. But after, you know, myself and Thanos and Kirsten were outside as well for 15 minutes. You know, honestly, didn't smell anything. So there is, I think there is some, you know, what people perceive of smells varies. You know, so all we can do at this point is measure and what are the measurements showed at that time is during, when that DRV hearing was, it was zero. So at this point, you know, we understand we're, you know, the evidence that we have is showing that the levels that are detectable at the Creamery are below, you know, are at zero or very low. And they're, when they are detected, it's for a very short period of time. So they're, you know, below the kind of, the standard that the city has in their public health manual. Also, you know, we represent that that does not rise to the level of public health hazard. It may, you know, people may be smelling something, but we think there's a distinction there. You know, so we ask that if the council's going to issue an order tonight, it would be to vacate the notice of intent. That being said, as we've discussed, you know, what I think the Creamery remains open. And if more information is needed, we're certainly happy to continue discussing with the city on how we can provide that.
Thank you for coming in. We'll open it up for some public comment.
Do you want to read that letter into, into first?
Yeah.
You want to read that letter first?
I'll read this as one of the public comments. So I received a letter from Sandra Reed, your Sandra. Sandra is hoarse tonight or lost her voice, right? So I will read this for her. And I have not read it yet, so bear with me. The Creamery itself is definitely an asset, but not how it is currently being managed. The management claims to be committed to being a good corporate citizen and contributor to St. Albans economy and community. Their actions do not match their words. They have signs that they say they are now hiring, but how they treat new employee, employees drives them away. They would not be requiring their present employees to be trained to do other necessary jobs so that they can do two jobs simultaneously. And we're getting away from the subject here a little bit. Employees are not being treated with proper respect and they are not, we're not here to determine anything about the operation of the facility. We're here to discuss mainly the odor issue. So I'm skipping over a little bit. That is not acting good faith. Losing certain privileges might motivate them to change. Once again, that's an employer-employee discussion. Ms. Reed, I don't see much here that is pertinent to the odor. This is, this is, once again, we're focused on the odor, not on ownership or employee activity. So that's about as far as we're going to take that.
Do you have something about the odor, ma'am?
If it's specific to the odor, then we will discuss it. We will not get into employee activities.
Yep, come right up.
Well, not, not, why don't you sit right there? Into that, into that microphone, I should be able to hear you. Yeah.
Well, Mr., he was asked about the odor. I can't talk, it's loud enough.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. There's Mr. Reed who takes care of the odors there. Well, he, he did not let him fix the problem. He delayed it. And he said that his engineer, he wanted his engineer to fix the problem. And days, it took days before the engineer got there and he didn't know how to fix the problem. And then there was a lady at a meeting that said that she had smelled odor. There was smoke coming from the building. And Mr., what's his name? Let us said it wasn't smoke, that it was steam. And it was caused, and he spread, expressed strongly by water. That was not true. Mr. Reed told me that it was from spoiled milk products. So.
Okay.
And, well, that's part of it anyways. So he hasn't been telling the truth about things.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. For those who didn't hear, it was an issue that arose about repairing a issue at the plant by Mr. Reed. And he was told to stand down until the engineer fixed it. And there was an issue with steam or smoke, what the discussion was. So anyone else with public comment? Thank you, Ms. Reed, for stepping in. No other comments on this public? So do I understand that your contract on the odor sensors will run through the end of October?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other things that you're doing to combat the odor that we should know about? Are there any other things, any other steps you're taking other than these monitors? So that we would know that something's going on in a productive manner?
Yeah, I mean, I'll speak Thanos and then feel free to jump in. So there's, I think, two things. One, there's the, the Creamery is continuing to do its own kind of monitoring with handheld sensors. That data is consistent with the consultants. Then the Creamery is moving forward with engineering for wet scrubber, which I think was raised at the last city council meeting. And that, that's a further, it's another tool like carbon filtration or the permanganate that is currently in there. That is kind of an industry standard for mitigating odors. So that's, you know, how that will be implemented, I think is going to be influenced by what the monitoring shows. And so it's not going to be something that's installed November 1st. But it's, that is in the pipeline. And so hopefully, I think it's early next year. So on the specific timeline, I'm not sure. But that is also moving forward.
How long have you been using handheld testing?
We started most recently in August.
During that time, on the dates of any of these complaints, did your handheld testing spike? Do you have any data with that?
I do have, if I may. This is, and this is provided to the DRV toxicology department. We have our data that ran from, I think I have no copies of this.
Founded the DRB?
Well, on Wednesday, at their hearings.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
The DRB hearing was still open?
This is, this is data, the handheld monitoring that was being taken. And the kind of critical distinction is these are at the point of discharge from the sludge tank and the EQ tank. So those are not at the property boundary. They're within the, within the property. So those levels, you know, through, as it diffuses, it would be less at the property boundary.
And then there's, you know, there's four, five.
So definitely 919, there was a spike.
Is this, is this measuring the same compounds that you're sensing boxes or monitoring the same, the same two?
It's just.
It's purple, right?
Is it mercaptin as well as H2S? It's H2S, I remember. And they're at different locations than where the monitors are in place currently.
Okay, can you look at the, what you just handed us and look at 91925? What's, what's going on on 91925 that would cause five complaints? And that looks like it's a lot different than all the rest of these. So what's going on that day?
The EQ tank is full and we have stopped production of 22.
And that's causing the odor?
That's causing, at the point of discharge, that's causing the .6. And I have to go back and double check, but usually, but usually that would lead me to that. That there has, basically the EQ tank has been full. We're not discharging it to the city. We're cleaning it up and then discharging. So that increased volume of water may have caused this. I will have to go and double check.
Okay. So we're getting to where we're seeing a problem and we're seeing complaints to the problem that's showing on this chart.
Again, this is at the point of discharge, discharge, not at the property line. And I did not have the sensor there. I do, I don't know if that was the same date as an email that I got from a resident at Federal Street.
Same date.
At that specific time, I was actually at the plant when I received the email. I grabbed my, the same sensor that took these measurements, walked to the person's area. I took a measurement outside Federal Street, followed all the way back and I couldn't detect anything for the same measurement.
Could you smell anything?
No, personally not.
Do you think like you can, do you think you can get immune to it? Like if you're in it all day? Do you, is it possible?
I'm not in it all day, but yes, you can have.
You can get immune to it?
Not immune, but if you smell it, I don't know for how much.
Desensitized.
Desensitized, yeah.
Okay.
But again, I was not smelling anything before that. And I did walk all the way to the tank to just see if I can smell it. And I was close to the tongue, I was able to smell something, but not outside the property line or at the person's residence.
Is there anything that you know of that changes when it's colder out there? So in the next four months that, that happened, are we going to see something less? Or does it, does it matter what time of year it is?
People shut their windows.
Yeah, other than that, thank you very much.
I'm not sure.
You don't know that? You don't know whether it's something that's because it's hot out or it's humid out, it causes a more smell? And we're coming up with the cold months? So that's going to give us some time to fix some stuff. The smell shouldn't be that noticeable? Nothing like that, that you know of?
No, I think the permanganate and the carbon that we have right now is actually taking care of the problem, based on what I'm seeing. I think the next step from the Creamery, which is to get that wet scrubber is an additional item. I'm, I can't even, I cannot even just start thinking of what else may happen. But yeah, I think what we have done for the slab discharge has limited the odors. And actually, those were coming in at the same time as the complaints. So when we're discharging, we had complaints. And we found out that was the pump of the truck that we stopped. And the complaints at that specific time went away. So these are the things that we do. And that's why I'm confident that at least the measurements that we're taking and the compounds that we're looking at, are the primary two compounds. One smells like propane. The other one smells like sewage or, I don't know if rotten milk has that, but that could be a different problem there.
Okay, counsel, we need to move this along. See what our next step could be.
I don't know. I'm, I'm kind of inclined to let them finish their testing with the consultant and see what it has to say. Compared to a more updated complaint list. and see what it has to say, compared to a more updated complaint list. But, I mean, my, this is just my opinion, I think the bottom line is, we're getting complaints. And just because the sensor doesn't say anything, per se, smelling it, you know, everybody at the stable smelled it, I mean, we know what it is, we know what's coming from, the neighbors are smelling it. So I'm inclined to let this go, but till the next meeting, but, I mean, we gotta plan. I mean, there's got, it's got, it's gotta be a path forward. And if, if we're, if, if we, if we just get another set, if we get another set of sensor readings that in no way align up with, like, four, five, six complaints in a day, then we're nowhere. We've just wasted a month, right?
I think what, what would be useful is, is to the extent we can get, if the city receives complaints, if they're transmitted to the Creamery as time as possible, because that, that will allow us to, you know, track what, what was going on, you know, if it was, there was pumping happening, or things like that. So, um, is that, I think, having the full data makes sense, and I think the, that the consultant will be able to analyze it as well, which will be useful.
Does the city have any, uh, compounds they want to see measured?
I guess I was gonna, I was gonna bring that up, but, um, I would be curious to see what that discussion is with your consultant, as to what are the other potential options? I don't.
I would think that would be his expertise, right?
Right. I, I'm not a.
But, I mean, we're, we're, we're getting the reports from Mr. Mohan. Is, is there a compound that he would like to measure? I guess that would be my question.
Dom, is that a conversation you can have with Matt?
Yeah, you know, look, Matt's not the technical expert here, right? You know, and it's a question of where this burden lies. You know, we can take another month of data, but for, we're two ships in the night here, you know? Our, our monitors are giving us a whole bunch of qualitative data. And they're saying things like, "It smells like a rotten, decaying body." "It smells like a dead animal." "It smells so bad, I'm nauseous." And.
That's subjective.
It's 100% subjective, but I don't think we're the, but, you know, look, you gotta clear your docket, you know? Like, we can kick this to Superior Court and fight about it over there, or we can give them another month to come in and say that our monitors showed that these two things we're testing for showed nothing. And you're going to have a whole list of complaints during that same period, saying, "It stinks right around the co-op."
What's our current method, Dom, of communicating the complaints to?
Soon as they come in, we send them over.
Is, is there a better way? Like, do we send an email? What's the best way?
You're shaking your head.
No, the last complaints, and actually, since a few months, we have not been receiving any complaints. This is the first time that I saw the complaints, especially the ones that you're referring to, was when a colleague of mine basically put your packets and docket. So I'm not, I'm not getting the complaints, and not only that, we're not getting what we asked for, which is duration, time, location. We're just asking for, um, those things, and we're getting, "It smells like rotten milk."
But the, the duration is difficult, right? It's, it's, like, I, I smelled it for the first time two weeks ago, I was just driving by. I didn't pull over in time how long it lasted, or, duration's going to be a tough one unless we pay City Health to sit there and.
Which, I understand, I understand the point, fair.
I think time and location are, are critical ones.
I think, I think we're getting closer to a motion, but I think something that I want to convey is that, and I get where you're coming from. I get that if we put this in, you're going to appeal it, it's going to go to court, and you got a bunch of data points that say, you know, "There's no gas." I get that. And we hope it doesn't get to that point. But we need, we need you guys to understand that there is a smell. And I don't care what that says, we're still going to get complaints. And we have to, we can't possibly come up with a plan if we're so far apart where you're like, "There's no smell."
What I can tell you is that we gave those complaints to our, um, that's our hygienist, because that's what he is really. And we invited the city to the meeting, which, um, Mr. Mohan was there. And we offered and stated which sensors we're going to use based on the complaints. And I'm assuming that since Mr. Mohan did not have any objection to that, or anything like that, that this was a good one that we wanted to measure.
You know, Mr. Mohan is our enforcement, you know? He's not a scientist, so, or an engineer. So we're kind of looking onto you, just like, I'm not, we're, you're in that business. You hire engineers and consultants. We need those engineers and consultants to come up with a plan to stop this and monitor it. And if they're using the wrong monitors, that's surely not a city issue, that's, that's a, your business issue.
I will check with the engineer, and, uh, based again on the complaints, those are the two compounds that mainly cause those smells. At least, that's what I've been told.
So, sorry I keep going back to this, but I just want to make sure that communication is as good as possible. How, how, what would be the best way for us to get those complaints to you? Like.
And who do they need to go?
And who do they need to go to?
Does it need to go to your engineer? Does it need to go to you directly?
Should it be a text? Should it be an email? Like, what's the most effective way for us to get you the information you need to pinpoint where it's coming from?
In the past, there was an email directed to me, and I distributed it to my team. Uh, that I stopped.
Does an email work for?
Is that quick enough?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Well, you know, the, the order calls on the co-op to establish a complaint line and post-public notice, you know? This, this defense that, "Well, the city didn't tell us soon enough that it stunk, so we could go out and smell it."
What is the complaint line? Like a, like a phone line? Like a?
Yeah, they should run it. Look, you know, I mean, we're reflecting public sentiment, and it's there, they're trying to shift the burden on to us, to say, "Prove that we don't stink."
So how, can you respond to the public, the complaint line?
Sure. And I don't think this is about proving or disproving that the odor perceptions that people have in the community are incorrect enough. It's not, it's, it's to provide data to the Creamery, to be able then take, and either give to the consultants, or look at what the operations and plan are, because without that, um, you know, if it's two weeks later, it's hard to go back in time to see what was happening. So it's really just about to then be able to, like, as, as we're doing tonight, is there some explanation? So without timely data, that's, that's where that comes. So I think what, what was working in the past is, to the extent the city gets a complaint, to just be, pass that on as quickly as possible by an email. You know, a lot of the ones that we saw in this packet, I think we were aware of maybe three or four, and there were 16, you know, so that was, that was.
What, how hard would it be for the DFA to set up a line that people could directly call and report their concerns? The date and time would be stamped, I'd give my name and say, "Hey, I'm trying to have a barbecue, and it really smells, and this is where I live, and this is what time it is." Like, how?
I don't think the Creamery currently has a staff person that is, that is around a phone for that purpose. I mean, I think, I think to the extent there is a record of it, I mean, they're, you know, they, they, as some people do, I think they've, they've emailed, um, the Creamery directly, so that, that works, um, if, if they want to do that. It's when the complaints are lodged with the city, that we assess those kinds of times.
And the, the trickiest thing for me is that the sensors say there's nothing, but the people's noses are saying there is some smell. So I think the smells aren't, what they're smelling isn't being detected on your sensors.
Yeah. I just want to make this 100% clear. What the sensors are saying is that there is no detectable odors to a health issue.
There's still an odor, but not to a certain level?
We don't know. They're just, the, the limit of those sensors is point one percent. If it doesn't reach that, they will not trigger a measurement.
So we live in a beautiful era of technology and internet. Is there, I work in school systems, we build forms that nobody has access to the data, but they can submit information. Now, Marty can have his quick link when he gets a phone call saying, "Hey, I just smelled the stank, can you please, like, let them know?" And you guys can have that notification that says, "Hey, someone just submitted a submission on that form." It doesn't have to be a phone. I mean, phones helpful, but the information's getting out there right now. We need at least something to put it for them.
I think it needs to be accessible to people.
Everyone can have that form, that's what I'm saying.
No, I mean, to the complainants.
That's what I'm saying.
I think.
I, I would disagree with you, Dom. I, I think we want it to go through us.
I would agree with you.
We want to know what it is, so that when it does happen, we have our recording.
That's fine, I could do a better job of emailing Panos, but, you know, the relationship is sour, pun intended. And have I been reticent to email them after their last performance? You betcha. So, yeah, guilty as charged and not giving them timely information. I can be better at that, but don't take away the findings, you know? The neighborhood has had enough. Let, you know, let's give them another month to come in with some data, and, but we're, they're measuring something different than what our neighborhood is experiencing.
I think what's really helpful is that you said, uh, that you don't want to say that people are not smelling something. And I think that's one part of this, is, I think the community might feel invalidated. Dismissed. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but this community has been, we are all farmers or related to one. And I think you saying that, you're not saying, you're not dismissing that people are struggling here, I think that's a, a really important part. I do think that, I don't know what we should do moving forward, but I think we could be good about getting that data to you really quickly, really specifically. So maybe we should have that down, like, exactly what you asked for, time, not sure if we can do the duration part.
That's fine, duration doesn't.
Location, and.
A description of the smell, and apart from, you know, "It smells foul."
So I think, I'm going to say one thing, I'm going to make a motion. Whatever this percentage is, when, when, if this motion goes through, when you come back, um, we need data from the, from the consultant. What level does it take to stink? I mean, what, what level of these gases, or any gas, does it take for a restaurant to smell it three blocks away? And then after we know what's causing it, how are we going to fix it? And I think that's 100% what we're going to expect next.
I compare it to decimals, right? Someone says it's 78 decimals, or what's that mean? It's a vacuum cleaner, or? And, and the point zero one, I'm not sure what that means in terms of a smell, and maybe that is a smell.
Yeah, these numbers are, for the average person, a little bit harder to follow.
And they don't align with complaints. All right, so I'm going to make a motion that, um, we table this order until next meeting, um, at which time, the council would like to hear a path forward, um, reports from the consultant, and what we're going to do about this.
In a second. I would add that it is probably a good likelihood that we would not extend it again. I'll just give you a heads up on that. So the more we can do in the next 21 days, the better off we're all going to be, for sure. So we have a motion in a second. Any further questions on this, comments? Hearing, uh, although the favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in again, we appreciate it. All right, we're moving on to, uh, the other dreaded topic of, um, to ban roosters in the city. There is an ordinance that has been presented, we've had, um, the first reading, and now we're talking about the second reading. Chip has been working on that. Thank you, Chip, for your work, and, so, for your note, yes?
Yep, thank you very much. Directed to come up with an ordinance that specifically bans roosters. I think there's, uh, part of the reasoning is that, uh, roosters typically present a noise nuisance, and yet, noise ordinance is not always, i- is not the most elegant and direct way of regulating the problem. Many communities ban roosters, the, uh, few of the communities in Vermont, such as Essex Junction, South Burlington, they actually, uh, they, they ban roosters because they permit chickens, and it says female, uh, male chickens are not allowed, uh, as, and this is for the keeping of backyard chickens. So in the proposed amendment, would insert into the animal control ordinance, a, uh, section specific to male chickens or roosters. Basically, once they are discovered, the owner has 14 days to, um, remove the rooster from the city. And if the order's not complying, complied with, within the 14 calendar days, the, uh, city manager can refer the matter to the city council, uh, and the owner shall be fined, subject to the same fine schedule that's associated with most other animal ordinance violations. The, uh, city council at their hearing can, um, has a whole array of different, uh, remedies available to you, such as giving the person more time, resetting the schedule, resetting the fine schedule, ultimately up to, um, uh, giving the, the city manager the ability to seek a court order for the removal of the rooster, if it gets to that point.
Thank you, Chip. Any questions for Chip on this? Any further feedback?
Thank you for considering ample time needed to identify and, uh, identify a rooster in general. My brother learned a lot about this one.
Yeah, I mean, most, I know, I have backyard chickens, I know that if we discovered that we had accidentally purchased a rooster, um, which happens now and then, then we would be, we'd be doing the same thing that you've heard many other people do, is they go looking for, "How, where can I bring my rooster?" And there are bird rescue organizations, there are people who take them on farms, um, I've seen it happen a number of ways. I've seen Facebook posts about, "Hey, can someone take my rooster?", and there have been comments saying, "We'll take your rooster." So. Yeah.
Now I know what's behind that fence at your house.
Right. That's one thing, you know what that means.
I didn't know that, right there.
So far, not a rooster.
Thanks for not having a rooster.
Entertained, a motion to approve the second reading.
Is there any public comment?
Well, is there any public comment on the?
I know I'm not a city resident, but for information, I do have plenty of chickens. And out of a batch of six chicks, I ended up with definitely one rooster. They're about four months old now, possibly two, and I still am not sure if that second one is a rooster. So it can take up to six months to determine if you have a rooster or not. It's not always within the first few weeks.
Yeah, I think that this, this ordinance, though, if, if the owner can't just, can't identify it, then we surely can. So this one's even taking effect until we can identify it.
There, there can be some background for that. I'm going back, I don't care if I have a rooster, or a pre-range, whatever, but I have one that I still don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Can I say?
Sure. Uh, state your name, please.
My name is Katie. I do live in the city, I don't live near any farms or anything like that, and there is a rooster that is the reason I'm here tonight. I've never actually been to a city council meeting before. But, um, it's, it's not just like, "Oh, it was in the morning when we woke up, it greased all the sun." It was like 10 straight hours of crack-a-boodle-dooin. And like, I beat up until today, we've had beautiful weather, I could not sit on the back deck and carry on a conversation with my parents. Like, we had to go inside and close all the windows. It's not just, you know, "Oh, it happened for a little while," like dogs bark in the neighborhood, and then they, you know, owners take them out or whatever, like, it's, it happens.
Where do you live?
Where do I live?
Yeah.
Over near the Barlow School.
So you support your gassy ordinance?
I very much am in favor of this ordinance, so much.
Welcome to your first city council meeting.
Again, like, it's not, and I think the magic is upon discovery, right? Like. Well, you don't discover the rooster, then you don't know what the rooster is. As a rooster owner? Yeah, they're annoying. I like them for, they have plenty of benefits, but if you live in a city, you did not sign up for the backstories.
And I will say, my neighbor has hens, and when they're laying, you hear them, but they're not as loud as a rooster.
I don't, I don't even, I think it might be, like, within a couple blocks, like, it's not like my next door neighbor.
Smith Street, Catholic.
My name's Emily, I live on Huntington Street, and I, I'm also here for the first time for the same reason. I support this ordinance for subjective reasons, I would like to sleep past. I would like to sleep past 5 o'clock. I've done everything I can to mitigate the sound of the two roosters who live next door. But my window is actually closer than my neighbor's window because of the way my house is set back. And I think it's a property value challenge as well. If I had known about this, it might have given me pause before I bought this house in July. So I was really excited to hear about this as being proposed. I think it's good policy because it's fair. If that's an expectation moving forward, and it allows all parties to have a a subjective standard that they can point to rather than having to point at each other, which I think will create a little bit more harmony moving forward. So just wanted to comment that I'm in favor of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would just share to the two of you that not all council meetings are this exciting.
I'm coming back.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. No one on...
Motion to approve the ordinance to ban roosters.
Sir?
Motion second. Any further comments? Hearing none, although the favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? So no. Chip, make sure you work on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks, for coming in. Now we're moving to public infrastructure, information regarding state grant pedestrian improvements.
Yeah, I'm gonna share a presentation. Kayla, the consultant on the project, is going to...
This is the type of consultant DFA needs. She knows about chickens and roads.
Personally, I know about chickens. I used to be a town resident out in Fairfield, now.
Can you speak to why the chicken crossed the road then? Make sure that, yeah, we'll take that out of the number. It's not a, it's not a council comment.
So there is nothing for anybody to vote on or approve. This is purely informational as far as city council or public involvement. So there is currently a, it's statewide, but it has six different locations around the state. It is fully state-funded as a part of the Safe Roots to School Initiative. So in St. Albans, if you can, I'm not used to not having control. In St. Albans, the project team includes Chip Sawyer and Mitch Crave? Does that happen?
Mitch has actually left the city school, but we do have a contact there.
Okay. And, oh.
I know how you feel.
So as far as STAN Tech, the consultant team is Chris Gendron, Eric Holling, and myself. I actually did most of the work on this project. And V Trans, Derek Kennison, their contact information should be listed at the end. And I believe there is a PDF that is available to you all.
Yeah, they have it in their package.
Okay. So tonight's purpose is to review the project development process, the project area, the existing conditions, and what's proposed and what comes next. So this is based on a 2022 school grant program. It is, my understanding, the grant program is no longer active, but these funds were still available, which is how this project came to be. There are six municipalities involved in this contract. And for St. Albans, it involves super, super exciting guys flashing lights on signs.
That is exciting.
Flashing lights on signs is as crazy as it gets here. So we are currently in the engineering phase. It has already been defined and funded, and hopefully it'll be constructed. All six posts and signs, next construction season. So on North Elm Street, we are looking at a photo of currently, it is just some paint on the road and a couple crossing here, signs. Three rod right of way, I believe is about 50 feet. And that's measured from the center of the roadway, usually the double yellow line. So 50 feet, about 25 feet on either side of center. It's 25 mile an hour speed limit, right next to the St. Albans City School. So currently, there is a couple of crossing signs. We are proposing to replace those with ones with flashing lights, like the one right outside City Hall. Add a couple of ahead warning, actually, they're already there, replace the warning ahead signs. And add a stop sign that has some flashing LEDs around the perimeter of it to make the stop sign pop a little bit more, just draw some attention to it.
In unison with the yellow lights?
I do not know.
Two separate intersections.
Yeah.
The new pedestrian beacons will be at that crosswalk that crosses North Elm to go down the sidewalk of Ellis Street. You can see it on the map, kind of on the right side. And the flashing beacons for the stop signs will be on the four-way stop at Aldis and North Elm, because so many students cross there. It's just to remind cars they need to come to a stop. Makes them more likely to notice a pedestrian and make sure they stay stopped while the pedestrian crosses.
I believe it's possible to rig those lights up the same way you push a button across, but I do not believe that's part of this design. It's just a constantly flashing stop to draw some more attention to the fact that cars need to stop there. And the sidewalk crossing light will function like the one right outside City Hall across Main Street. And the second location is right across Main Street. I believe it's the crosswalk right next to Twigs. So same thing, 25 mile an hour speed limit, but a lot more vehicles per day and a wider section of road, four rod right of way. I know rods don't mean anything to the majority of people. So if three rods is about 50 feet, you're looking probably about 60 feet, I think. So, yeah, from Taylor Park over to the Business Strip across the street.
What's gonna be there, the one where Twigs is?
Same thing, it's another flashing crosswalk.
Okay, so the problem with that, right, is UPS trucks park down a little bit from there a lot of times, and it blocks that whole, so you can't even see what's going on. I mean, I've had a couple people call me up, some kinds of ant being one, to say that there's many times that there's a truck sitting there, you can't even see the person coming out on the crosswalk.
Yeah.
So they would flash on both sides of the road. So you would be able to see, even if there's a truck blocking the one on the right side of the road, you should still be able to see the one on the left.
It blocks on both sides of the sign.
They will flash on both sides, on both sides of the sign.
Okay, okay.
So you'll have four different locations where they flash.
Okay.
And it is also up to the pedestrian, if a UPS truck is there, to watch.
You can peek?
Sometimes it's hard, because like the way their trucks park, you do peek around this side, and you go a little bit further, and then that's the other side of their truck facing out, so I get that. It is hard, but it's nice to have the lights.
So next steps is final plans. This fall goes to contract plans and specs after a review period. There really shouldn't be anything crazy for St. Albans. It'll go out to bid this winter and be completed next summer.
What's the value of the grant? Like, if all this happens, what's the, what's the number value that we are saving in order, you know, with happening with the grant?
I would have to go look up...
Chip, what was it, 10 grand or something?
Oh, I'd say, yeah. I mean, it's at least two grands for each.
Per setup.
At least two grand per, probably more now, it might be double, maybe four grand.
Last we looked, it was 10 grand to do one of these.
Oh.
Palky one, one, this is really the palky side.
The flashing stop signs, is there any type of concern for environments impact since they're gonna be flashing all the time with regards to the homes around that intersection? I mean, I like the idea of them, just wanna make sure we're not gonna impact families.
I don't personally know of any environmental, like, light pollution concerns with them. I can go look up more information on that. But this isn't the first location we've, even on just my projects, we've suggested them at. Another one was on a very residential street in Burlington.
They're only activated with a push of a button.
The stop sign is 24/7, blinking.
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
And I think they're just little...
They're little dots around the outsides of them, I've seen them.
Yeah, I think they can't be any bigger than like a reflector on a mailbox or something.
Are they tiny? Yeah, they're still very bright at night, is what I was wondering.
How are they energized?
I believe it's all solar, solar panel, but I would have to, because you can wire them as well. But where it's technically urban, it's still pretty rural as far as urban is concerned. I believe they are solar. I have to go look at the quantity sheets and the items, specific information.
Chip, I understand that this is a program coming to an end. I have had many, for future opportunities, I've had many inquiries about that crossing by Scratch and BFA to have a lighted situation there as well.
Yeah.
I know this is, the money's committed to these projects, but if you come across something, they are, I've heard it multiple times.
Right.
We put one at Herrick, because they had some issues with some of the crossings in Milton. And the school actually ended up having a chip in portion of it, the town to do it. So we can always reach out, see if there's anything in the budget to help split that one.
I doubt it. Get right on that.
Trust me, the budget out there isn't gonna slip later.
Okay, anything else you'd like to share?
Nope, just contact information, and I can use my business card too. But reach me through Herrick or just STAN Tech.
So you're, you're projecting April construction or spring?
Yeah, it should go out to bid over the winter, the winter bid season, basically when nobody's really doing much as far as construction. It'll go out over the winter, and somebody will pick it up. Hard to say with construction companies if they're not busy. And this will be six different locations around the entire state.
And these are beyond our scope and capacity as far as public works goes?
Yeah, this, I don't know who will pick this up. This could be somebody like SD Ireland, it could just be some some tiny little three-man operation. I don't, we don't have any control over that. So they could get it, want to do it first thing off of that in April, or they could say, oh, we're gonna do the southern ones now, and we'll get up to St. Albans when we get there.
Yeah.
So...
Good.
Thanks.
So, Don, you'll grab a card more so from the rooster consultant?
Yeah. Sounds like he's probably identified, which is not quite true.
I know one is, the other one's being sneaky.
They're not born with a red head?
No, and to be fair, neither one of them is crowed, because I have another older rooster, so...
That controls it.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions on this? More all informational, so thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Appreciate you coming in and hanging out. Chip answered that. Chip answered that on that?
No, we look forward to seeing these installed. And, yeah, any future ideas for locations?
Alright, so we'll move on to item number eight, which is the first reading regarding no parking on Bishop Street between the hours of 8:00 AM and 10:00 AM. This is something that's brought to our attention by Mr. Bull Rescue on Bishop Street.
Yes.
This is what we are pitching for a solution.
That's the segue. After some resident contacts, city staff, I believe, most, Marty in particular, basically came to the conclusion that it might be best to have this block operate under the same rules as some others, including Lincoln Avenue, where parking's prohibited from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. And it's specifically meant to keep the students from crowding the block as they park on their way to school. So we have, we have other locate, in fact, I included some of the existing sections of ordinance, some of the existing items where we have blocks or sections of streets that are using the 8:00 to 10:00 AM prohibition. And so we have the signage, we have the existing enforcement of these areas. We would just be adding this block of Bishop Street between High Street and Lincoln Avenue to that list.
I have to say, I was a little confused with Mike's concerns. He didn't want to lose parking, right? Because there was a sign up, Marty, from some point on Bishop down to the corner of Lincoln.
So I met with him, we had moved the sign, no parking here at the corner, because a resident had complained when he tries to back out of his driveway, there's cars parked directly across from his curb cut, which is an ordinance violation. But so to get around that, we moved the sign up to prevent cars from parking further down, causing that issue. So I went up and met with Mike. Mike was concerned with being able to have on-street parking for residents that have company over and everything. And I explained to him that we've done this on other areas around the school. And he agreed that he would like to try this option to see how that works.
Most of my neighbors don't seem to have an issue with the highway, mostly because they're gonna work in the morning, and then they have company in the evening, so it's not an issue.
Is that street wide enough to have parking on both sides of the street?
Bishop? No way.
It feels tight.
It's hardly wide enough to have parking.
Yeah, no way.
Right, but I'm, so I'm just saying, like, there's already no parking on one side of the street, right?
Yeah.
So they can park on both sides of the street, just not between 8:00 and 10:00?
No.
No.
There's still no parking on the south side.
Okay, what else?
On the north side, they would only be able to park, they wouldn't be able to park there between 8:00 and 10:00.
Okay.
And if a resident parked there, it would be an enforcement issue. And if push came to shove, we could issue a residential pass, but needed to happen.
So we're only blocking it for two hours?
Yeah.
Really to keep students from parking there?
Yes. I was gonna comment that that street is full during mass, but there is no mass, anyway. So I guess that's not a concern.
If you're still parking there for mass, you're not one of them.
I go mainly for confession.
Where is everybody?
While you're walking down.
Alright, any other questions for Chip on this fairly straightforward? Thank you for doing the outreach, Marty with Mike.
Yes, thank you.
Second lineup from the bottom, you don't need the and. First read, second lineup from the bottom, you don't need the and. A and B, you don't need the and. A four, you don't need that and.
Okay.
And between.
Alright.
As I stated, first reading, no vote necessary. Any other questions before we move on?
I'll say something.
No other questions? Alright, Chip, thanks for your time on that. Marty, thank you.
Yeah.
We're moving on to, who's the Sawyer dude? I don't know who Sawyer is, but... Emissions, errors and emissions on the grant list?
Yep.
You got that one, Chip?
Yes. We have a few more corrections for the grant list, many of them coming from either just some quirks with the data as we transferred from our old assessing software to the new one. But also, in some cases, we had people taking a higher interest in their tax bills based on the reappraisal and discovering that we had missed some things in the past and we're correcting those things now. So they're numbered in my memo based on the circle numbers next to them on the actual errors and emissions certificate. The top two, we realized that the land for the Cadillac properties out at Random Place had been sold into an HOA, but the city missed that, I think, back in 2022. So we corrected that and created the new parcel and the new tax bill for the land portion of the property.
Same amount.
Yeah, the amounts did not change, they just got shifted to a new tax bill. Three and four, for some reason, when we transferred from our new assessing software, the two buildings, Ralston's and As the Crow flies, should be combined. They have been combined because the city owns both of them, but somehow they got separated, and the tax exemption information was lost. So we taking one, making one parcel inactive, and on the combined parcel, we are taxing just the As the Crow flies portion, because that's the only space that's being actively leased. 121 Congress Street, there's some, a piece of common land in the subdivision was actually sold as Lot Number 7, so we're taking that out from the common land tax bill, and we created a new tax bill for the owners of that plot. Land value only at this, at this time. Villa Rehab Center, there was an error in the number of... Villa Rehab Center, there was an error in the number of bedrooms and other room counts in their property record cards. We corrected that and the value changed. And then in RL Valley, Tyler, Tyler Technologies erroneously included two warehouse buildings. They didn't know that they were in the town. They weren't checking on the intricacies of the city-town boundary there. So we removed the warehouses from that parcel, reissued the tax bill. And those are the corrections. They require city council signatures.
Any questions for Chip? Really straightforward. Thank you for doing the work on that, Chip.
That's all the assessing stuff. Gracia and Sarah downstairs in the office.
And our thank you to them. If there's no questions on these, entertain a motion to accept them as presented.
I'll make a motion to consider errors and omissions from the April 2025 grand list.
Is there a second?
A second.
Was that Marie or Marie?
Yeah.
Thank you. The motion, second A for the questions. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. If you're accepting that, aye. Any opposition? Hearing none, errors and omissions as presented is approved. Thank you, Chip.
You.
Now, we will bring to the table Sarah Macy. Thank you for waiting, Sarah.
You're welcome.
We have the year-end financial report.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Last month, I had included a preliminary FY25 year-end report in your weekly report and we discussed talking, having a more thorough presentation at tonight's meeting. So here we are. Included in your packet are the FY25 almost final numbers. The auditors are still working through them, but I anticipate very few, if any, changes at this point. Fieldwork was completed at the beginning of the month. It was a great time for everybody and they left a day early, which is always a sign. Chip is laughing at me, which is always a sign of success. They, it was a great time. It's like the finance Super Bowl and we won, so.
So funny.
They said they were in excellent shape. They have had no adjustments to the numbers, which is a point of professional pride. And we had a really solid year. And so I will summarize for you what I explained in detail in my memo. The general fund, the water fund, the wastewater fund, and the stormwater fund all ended FY25 with, with a surplus. They are not large. That's not our goal here. Our goal here is frankly to break even, to be at zero. And we were very close to zero in some of those funds and around, under 3% off of budget in the general fund. What this allowed us to do is to pull our unassigned fund balance out of a negative position, which the auditors have been harping on us about for a couple of years and put it right into a very small positive position. So also something that we should be very pleased with. Everybody worked very hard in FY25 to keep their operations in line with their budget and to be flexible and nimble as things came up that were unexpected. This is thoroughly a team effort from everyone at the city. One of the items that I pointed out for you in your memo is how the local option tax has been doing since we implemented that in FY21. FY21, we had three of the four quarters, but as you can see, it has grown from $500,000 up to $783,000 this past year. Recall, this has enabled us to pay the debt service on the pool, on some of the final neighborhood sidewalks and other items without impacting the property tax rate in the city. So this has been a successful program from the outset. Are there any questions?
Good news on the tax delinquencies being the lowest.
Yes, yes.
Bad news on the pool.
Yes. I agree. So, as Tim noted, tax delinquencies at the end of the year are the lowest they've been since I've been tracking them, starting in 2012. They were at 0.94%. They have never, between 2012 and now, been below 1% at the end of the year, with the highest being about 2.34%. So this is, this is huge. We have, Kristin in the office works very hard with these and she does an excellent job communicating with people on a regular basis and she adds a personal touch to what is sometimes a cold process. And so I'm very pleased with the work that she's done here. And, yeah, were you going to ask me something, Tim? Were you delinquent? Where would I spell it?
And, and I think administration worked to extend their deadline for the first quarter, is that?
That's true. That's coming into FY26. So this is as of June 30th, 2025. So coming into the new fiscal year, we did extend that. We had an interest holiday for a month so that people could adjust appropriately to the first quarter.
Not to get off subject, but do we know how that was received?
I, I, when I looked at Q1 collections, we were slightly below where our historic average was, but no more than three or four percentage points, not even at five. As Tim mentioned, two areas that we did see a deficit in on a departmental level or a programmatic level was the, the pool. Recall, in the FY26 budget, we pulled back our revenue projections on the pool to make them a little bit more realistic with what we had been seeing as we adjust to what is life like with, with the really cool pool at Hardback. And so I'm hopeful that in 2026, that will go toward balancing things out on the pool side. Unfortunately, we did have a pump at the pool burn up, literally, and that was pretty expensive. That was on the outside. And then we had heat and HVAC issues throughout the pool and in the locker room. So those were some pretty costly repairs during the year that we hadn't anticipated.
Can I, can I ask a question? So when it says the deficit was 61,000 more than budgeted, what's the total deficit? Is it, it's not, it's 61,000 plus? Like what is the total deficit for the pool and the movie theater?
So if we look at the chart here, so we budgeted for the pool to pull on general governmental revenues. So we, we budget for expenditures, programmatic revenues. Most programs end up with a net deficit, so a budgeted deficit. We're not going to bring enough in in program revenues to cover all of our expenditures. And so all of those pieces are then backfilled with the property tax and other general revenues. So the pool on the general fund, the proposed revenues were $550,000. They came in at $517,000. Most of this is that we only hit the halfway mark on swim lessons. And so I think what we were anticipating as a robust program did not pan out, mostly because of volatility in staffing levels throughout the fiscal year. That's in row 24 on the left-hand side of the spreadsheet, on the revenue side. And then the pool is in row 18 on the right-hand side. We had budgeted for about $545,000 in expenditures and we hit 572. And so we had budgeted for a $6,000 deficit and we ended up with closer to $70,000 because the revenues were under and the expenditures were over. So that's what that means.
Okay.
A similar thing happened at the Weldon Theater. We had a really strong year at the theater around the halfway point. The theater was break even, if not better, and then we had some serious projector issues and then had to replace the popcorn machine. The popcorn machine was only $4,000, but the projector issues were costly. We have to bring professionals in and house them while they're working on the components. And so that racked up the expenditures there. But you can see in row 26, the Weldon Theater ended up with revenues $100,000 higher than budgeted. So we anticipated the theater to bring in $262,000. It brought in $363,000. And so that, I think, we have to take as a win. That tells us that people are coming to the theater, that the work we are doing over there is returning results in the community, that people are coming out, they're coming to see the movies. We don't control what movies are out, so some of it's not on us, but we can still take it as a win. And then on the expenditure side, the theater shows up in row 20. We thought that it would cost about $295, so we were looking to be upside down by about $30,000 and it cost $433. Now, there's a direct correlation between those increased revenues, the increased expenditures, because a certain percentage of our concession sales goes to purchase concession items and a percentage of our ticket sales goes back to the production companies. So there's where we end up.
Is there an incentive for city residents to go to the movies since the city residents support the movie theater?
There is not currently a different rate structure. There's just your general, general admissions, adult versus child, evening and then matinee.
No, it's just a, it's a great question, just a thought. And in regards to the pool, you know, the town said no, city said yes, so there's different rates.
There are different rates. The pool operates more like our other recreation programs. Now, there is, the town pays the differential, right? So as a town resident, if you go to the pool, your experience is that you are charged the same rate. And then on a quarterly basis, the city invoices the town for actual utilization and the town pays the difference between the city rate and the non-resident.
And does that rate fluctuate based on things like a costly pump failure?
Well, as we go into budget season, we'll be evaluating the rate structure with the recreation department for all of the programs.
Do we have a capital fund dedicated to, like, a pool capital fund? Because obviously it's going to be.
We don't have a separate capital fund. We manage our capital as the needs arise.
We're still learning though, right? We're still learning.
I agree with that.
Because we don't know how often we expect a pump to go or, you know.
Or a projector to go.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just, I just want to look out for city residents who said yes and who pony up the bulk of the money to support the movie theater and the pool and just make sure we're just keeping that in mind.
The biggest issue at the pool was we had a staffing challenge and we've absorbed that position presently. So hopefully we're going to not fill that position and that'll help us reduce the expenditures.
Sarah, quick question on the movie theater. Do you know what percentage of concession sales and ticket sales go back to purchasing more of those things?
Uh, ticket sales is about 60% goes back to the.
That's a lot.
It's like gas stations. They make their money on the food.
And then, um, and then concessions is, is a, I don't, I don't, is double. So what we pay, we pay a wholesale and then we multiply that by two to be retail price.
Cool.
Okay, just keep us there, pack people down before they go in.
Yeah. I was actually, I went to the movies.
I'm joking, I'm joking.
I actually went to the movies the other day. I hope this goes on record. And I took my friend's two daughters and I had just gone to the Weldon or the Majestic like two days before and a small popcorn at the Majestic was like, it was a small popcorn and two sodas was $37. Here, it was like, I got like two popcorns, I guess just that. It was like $5. $7 for two popcorns. I was like, oh, should have got more.
I guess the discussion for a later conference, why, why are you going to the Majestic? We'll revisit that.
Were you dressed like Taylor Swift?
I was not.
Okay.
Sarah, what else you have?
Well, I don't have anything else to highlight other than, well, I, I'll take Marty's advice. I don't have anything else to highlight, but I'm happy to answer any additional questions you have.
He was schooling you in the back, Marty was.
Yes.
I think all our secrets. I think it's a good example of when we go over the budget with the city manager and the city staff and we're always trying to trim, trim expenses or keep the revenue down. I do that. A lot of times, I, you know, it's hard for me to swallow some of the items he, he brings up. But if you look at 110% of budget and 107% expenditure, the stuff he brings forward gives the city, it's, it's being able to be more nimble with, when something big breaks and we've been overage in, in another department that can assist in helping us out with that. And so a lot of times we try to, you know, cut down stuff and we probably shouldn't be doing that, you know what I mean? But just, just an example. The, the manager presents us a budget and he says, this is what I can operate the city with. And that's where we stand. We don't look to say, oh, you made a lot with, with, not water source, sorry, I didn't mean to say that. With, with this department, so let's, let's try and trim that budget a little bit. You know, a lot of times this proves that when these big things happen, we have some extra money in the budget. Now we're glad we didn't do that, so.
It was good to hear you say, like, your goal is not to have a lot of extra money. Your goal is to be as close to even as possible, but when we do have that, that's where it's nice.
That's correct. Throughout the state, we talk a lot, our other municipalities are talking a lot about their fund balance, their fund balance policy and what is their target unassigned fund balance? So what is their rainy day fund? And recall, we've revisited this policy recently because the auditors were on us. They were saying, hey, you don't have any fund balance, but your fund balance policy says that you're going to. And we said, hold up, that's not our top priority here right now. Our top priority here right now is to reinvest all of our available resources back into our community and grow the grand list for the long-term viability of the city. And so we adjusted our fund balance policy recently to reflect that. And we also said in there, you know, if that ever is no longer our top priority and we find ourselves in a position where we have some more balance, we will revisit this. And so we, we were able to, in the middle of all of that, come out of a negative unassigned fund balance position, which is going to make the auditors happy, it's going to make the bond bank happy, it's going to make the, the other lenders happy. It stabilizes things in, in my world. But we are still putting, it's still a very, very small amount. It's about 1.5% of the budget with the professional standard being about 15 to 17% if you are in a position to fund a rainy day reserve, which as I said, we are not. That is not our top priority here. So all in all, a great, great year.
Nice job, Sarah.
Thank you. It was a team effort.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other questions for Sarah? Hearing none, we'll move on to your next item, which is the motion to authorize a revenue anticipation note.
Yep, so last month I received council authorization to seek short-term borrowing for $600,000 for the purchase of the Messenger Building. And we have been working with Northfield Savings Bank. Northfield Savings Bank has offered us a short-term note at 4.85%. That was the best rate that we could find outside of our relationship with our local bank. And they are requesting that the council authorize this borrowing specifically for Northfield Savings Bank and then sign this paper this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Make a motion to authorize the revenue anticipation, anticipation note to Northfield Savings Bank.
Motion second. Any other questions for Sarah? Is that a fixed or variable?
It's a fixed rate for 12 parts.
All of the favors, aye?
Aye.
Anyone to vote? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Pass this around. This is everyone's signature, please.
And now we have the review of the internal financial control checklist.
So we just have a two-pager here in your packet. This is a checklist that's in state statute that's required to go in front of the governing body once a year around June-ish. It's still warm out. This is the, what I would consider the absolute bare minimum for internal controls. And in my opinion, this is really designed for small, small entities who don't have professional finance teams, who don't have professional auditors to say, hey, are you at least doing the bare minimum? And so I've answered all of these questions for, based on what we're doing here. And I have put it in front of you to review and I would ask Tim for a signature after we finish discussing it. We have a much more robust system of internal controls in place than what is just on this checklist. That is a system that is reviewed by the auditors annually. They are not shy about weighing in on where they think we could make changes or improvements and we are continuously monitoring it for effectiveness. Are there any questions about this checklist or our broader system of internal controls that I can answer for you?
Just out of curiosity, the last one catches my eye a little bit. I think it's probably specific examples, but does the town owe money to town employees?
That's correct. There is one instance in which this would happen and it's outlined in the personnel policy. So our, the way our health plan is structured, we have a high deductible plan. And if, if you had an event at the beginning of the year, maybe before you had put funds aside in your health savings account to fund your deductible and you had to come up with a large amount of money to pay for that, you didn't have it, you could come to the manager and the finance, the HR team and request a loan that would then be repaid through payroll deductions throughout the year. If you happen to leave before the end of the year, all of it will be taken out of your final pay. So this is the only case in which the city would loan money to employee, an employee.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Not for the mayor to say, I need an equity line of. Not for the mayor to say, "I need an equity line of credit," or anything like that. Buy Disney World next week.
All right.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you. Tim, have you signed that? We did go through this, if you don't mind.
Now we move on to number 13, which is sign the Home Park Loan Agreement.
That's correct. This is a voter-approved, this note, this particular loan received voter approval back in March, possibly all the way back in November. Um, and it is for the underground storage at Houghton Park. It's $3.9 million through the state revolving loan fund. This is, a portion of this is forgivable. Approximately the top, the first million off the top would be forgiven once we move into repayment. At this point, we have the loan documents from the bond bank to be signed. Thank you, Chip. And I'd be happy to answer any questions before I pass them around.
What's the interest rate?
Let me see, in here, there is no interest. There might be a small administrative fee, which is...
Effectively interest.
A two, there, thank you. Let me see, it's a 2% administrative fee. At the end, so we borrow, uh, 3.9 million in total. The principal that we would repay is 2.95. And there is a million dollars total in administrative fee. It's large dollars, low percentage, large dollars. That does add up over time, so in the grand scheme of things, it's very low.
Chip, refresh our memory, we initially talked about a budget of being how much, and, uh, the bids came in at what?
For Home Park, C, um, I know that we have more than a million, we're, we're under budget by more than a million so far, just based on this. But that money might be used up with having to deal with the way that we deal with these soils in the project.
And that's all the soil that's up at Hardak?
It's going to be. The soil at Hardak at the moment is, is from the Lemon Drive project.
Is there a reason why some of it's all like, like blocked, like gated in now?
Yeah, that's what D E C wants us to do with some of the soils. But they've been covered up as well.
Is it contaminated some?
Well, it's from Home, uh...
The railroad.
It's from the railroad property. It's urban, it's urban background film, and that's the way D E C, yeah. We're walking around on it all the time.
Are we concerned that it's gonna impact the Grace Trail?
Stop.
Lot of signs, it should be fine.
The mums that we placed by the welcome sign are still there, so that's a win.
Or we've ordered a sign to stand there and reflect upon the piles, and then...
Sounds like there are no more questions about mommy thing.
The logo's for everyone, red is just for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, uh, we have some requests for water allocation. We had, uh, one of these come before us at the last meeting. We tabled it, uh, for the city manager to reconsider or to consider how that might impact us. So, Dom, why don't I turn it over to you on that?
So, uh, under the ordinance, the highest priority for, um, water and wastewater allocation are city and town properties within our designated growth centers. The sole criteria for granting an allocation is capacity. So in the allocation before you, uh, it's low priority because it's outside the city of the town. But it's a water allocation, and so the capacity issue is really a non-issue. All of the infrastructure costs are borne by the developer, and then, uh, the infrastructure is turned over to the city. Within the water business, it's really about economies of scale. The more rate payers you have for servicing bonds and operating costs, the lower the costs get for everybody. That's a different analysis on a wastewater project, um, because it's a fixed capacity. And so a project outside the city of the town, uh, would be the lowest priority and something that, uh, when that one came in, we might say, uh, this is how much capacity we have left. Do you really want to grant that to this project, which is outside the city of the town? But that's not what's before us tonight. You're good to go tonight.
Wasn't there also the question of the fairness? Because we had an agreement with the town and city that we don't have the swamp.
Yeah, but that, that's really influenced by the difference between water and wastewater.
So that, the, was it called the affiliation fee of...
Affiliation fee is no longer in fact.
Right, I know that, but was, did that involve water in the past?
The affiliation fee applied to water and wastewater.
So my question would be, if, if it was a thing in the past with the town, why wouldn't it be a thing with Swanton?
It's not the way the ordinance reads. If the council would like to talk about putting that back in place, we could have that discussion, but...
Yeah, it just... By the way, get on that real quick. The affiliation fee was difficult administratively. But as we go into budget season, in particular, as we're looking at the enterprise fund budgets, if you would like to differentiate between city and, you know, city, town, and other, I think a better way to accomplish that would be in our rate structure. So just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So we're going water and wastewater here tonight, right?
Yeah, but the only one that's outside of the city of the town is water. Cummings, the last one.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Dom on this?
Can we do these individually?
I was gonna suggest that as well.
Correct, I'll use myself more.
All right, so, uh, we will, there's four requests.
Motion to approve, uh, allocation to, uh, item B, Camping World 457 Swamp Room, St. Almond's Town.
The second?
Second.
Second to Trudy. Um, so we have a, a motion and a second to approve the water allocation for Camping World. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing done, motion passes.
Motion to approve item C, uh, Stephen and Christina Polack, uh, 151923 Jewel Avenue, St. Almond's Town.
Second.
We have a motion from Tim, seconded by Trudy regarding water allocation for Chua Street, Jewel Street. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
I'll make a motion to approve the water allocation, um, 189 Pearl Street, Mark and Ann Bechar. Water and wastewater.
We have a motion from Trudy, seconded by Eric for water wastewater, uh, for Mark and Ann Bechar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Abstention, word one.
We have an abstention from Tim. Now we'll move to the last allocation application from Richard Cummings, that was from the prior meeting.
I move to approve the water allocation to Richard Cummings of Linus Bridge and Swan.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Tim on that, motion from Chad. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing done, motion passes. We will now move on to the mayor's report.
Can I just say, I do want to explore your rate structure for people outside of city and towns long? That's just my opinion.
And you're entitled to that, Trudy.
Thank you.
Uh, we had a brief conversation earlier, I did, with Trudy. And I think, uh, Lindsay's gonna step up regarding the dog park and looking a little trashy. People leave chairs there. It's not the, it's not the look we want, I think, entering into the rec complex. So, um, we have to put some benches in and discourage people from bringing their own personal lawn chairs. And I think we should take a look at that or have them, uh, assist in the cost of those. That was number one. I congratulate Chip and, um, the Homegrown Recovery Center for receiving the CDBG grant in the amount of $771,000.
Hope growth.
Hope growth.
So, well, they're working, they're, for sure.
So, but thank you for taking the lead on that and walking them through the process. We assume we'll have a mural put up downtown, which, uh, will all be made aware of. Down the road, it's, it's been painted, and it will be mounted. So it's not gonna be painted on the walls itself, it'll be mounted. That will help with the structure of the, keeping the structure strong of the buildings. And that will be going in between, uh, Rail City Market and, uh, Red House Suites. Looking forward to that, I think that's gonna be a nice addition. Dom, thank you for doing the piece for the newsletter, for, uh, where we've come relative to pieces of property that we have purchased. And, um, and then where the, uh, appraisals have grown from where we started to where they are now, what the impact of the grant list is. So thank you for doing that. If people have conversations with others that they want to know why the city is buying property, that memo gives a good overview of what the impact has been in the city. So thank you for doing that. I'll hold my last one till everyone goes. I'll come to you, Lindsay, you can start with the council report.
Sure. Um, so Trudy, Marie, and I had our public safety meeting on Tuesday in the park. It was really good, not a ton in attendance, but, uh, definitely looking forward to having more of these conversations. We've been trying to meet in the park because that's where our, uh, community members have said they see the most or a lot of impact. So we had some really good conversations. Lieutenant Weatherby came by, we talked about a few different things. I'll have, yeah, we're gonna have another one. I don't think we planned it yet.
Not yet.
Trudy, I'll let you say more on that if you'd like to. And then I know that there's a spooky Saturday event that I heard from the BEI committee, during their meeting, when I was able to pop in for a few minutes. So that's Saturday, I think, the 25th. Excited about that. Not a fan of Halloween, but I will attend that. And yeah, I went to the farmer's market on Saturday, and it was a beautiful day. Now, I don't have much else to report. Sad that it's Marie's last meeting.
Oh, it is? Thanks for sharing that, Lindsay.
I'm a little sad that it's my last meeting, too. I've enjoyed it.
Why don't you go ahead, Marie?
Oh, okay. Yeah, I've, I've enjoyed being part of the council and this council. And I think that all of you bring an awful lot to the forefront and, and really are good servants of the city. And, um, I think that your constituents should be proud of all that, you know, you guys do. And I've been happy to be a, a small part of that. I think St. Almond's is, is in a great place. I think that we're fortunate to have our city hall, the staff at city hall. Everybody seems to work really well together, and, and I think that's what makes the city run real well. And, and kudos to you, Dom, for all that you've done in, in this city. And Tim, he's not only mayor because he's good at it, but he just, he just is right on top of things, always, uh, connecting with people in the city and, um, you know, opening discussions with people. And I think that that's important. You're, you're a great face for the city. So, thank you, everybody. It, uh, it's been almost nine years, and it doesn't seem like it, but, uh, I've enjoyed it. It's, it's educational, enlightening, and just a, a wonderful thing to be a part of. And, and, uh, I think that, um, I think it's good to be involved, and, and I've enjoyed it a lot. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Marie, for your time.
You're welcome.
It's been a pleasure.
Yeah, it sure has.
Chad?
Okay. Just really have one thing. Let's really talk about how bad the staff is. No, no, just kidding. My partner and I, we're out, um, doing dinner and a movie in town. And we have, we don't do that whole lot anymore. We have a little bit different things going on in our life with the kiddo. But, um, I was really impressed of how downtown looked, um, how busy it was, and how great the movie theater was. Sound was good, picture was good, popcorn was good. Glad it was cheap because I was paying. But everything downtown just looked great. It was, it was like a really impressive night. I usually work on weekends, so I don't see it, and it's full. But I happened to have a Friday off, or else Ashley was gonna leave me. And it really looked good downtown, so it was, it was impressive.
Eric?
I have one. Besides the fact that I did actually go out to a couple restaurants in last month that were amazing floor. The signs for Barlow Street parking out of the ordinance is through. Do we have a plan on what's getting those out?
Waiting for them to arrive. We watered them, but they, we've got a bunch of signs out back over there now, and that's one.
It's all I have.
Marty blaming on tariffs.
There you go.
Tariffs and COVID.
It's lockdown. COVID too, yeah.
Trudy?
Um, just to follow up on our public safety meeting, um, we did talk about, um, the loud cars, the paper plates, the tinted windows, we, with, um, Lieutenant, Lieutenant Weatherby. I'm gonna reach out to state representatives to talk to them about, like, laws, laws. And Jason felt like state statute could really help allow for some enforcement of those, um, rules because a lot of those vehicles should not be being inspected based on how they're put together. So we did talk about that. He also mentioned that there's a possibility, like, if we really wanted to do a saturation patrol, like, we could do that, but it would need to be considered in the budget. Like, if we wanted to do a saturated traffic stop where, where they target certain types of vehicles that are, um, breaking the law and being a nuisance. So those are, when you have budget discussions, those are possibilities. Last meeting, we also talked about the issue around parking and the traffic flow at city school. A resident had brought the concerns to the council, um, the Public Safety Committee. Mr. Hawkins' suggestion, um, took that on. We, um, had great cooperation from the school. They took many of our recommendations, already put them into play. We had zero communication or cooperation with the resident who brought the concerns forward. So I think that we continue to just support the school. I think if you, if you and the PD continue to get complaints from that resident, just send her back to us because she has not engaged. Um, one question, Marty. There are a bunch of overhanging trees around the city school parking lot. They're happy to trim them, but they're not sure if they're on her property or not. Um, but it is obstructing the, the roadway and the turning. So when people turn left into the parking lot at city school, those trees are really obstructing the view.
I would ask the attorney next to you. I think they have the right to trim them if they're...
Who has the right?
Absolutely.
The city or the school?
The school has the right to trim them if they're hanging over into their property.
Don't touch the trunk, though.
Given the nature of the relationship, I, I just wonder if they would be comfortable doing that. But, so you're telling me that they legally may trim those trees if they're hanging over into their parking lot?
I think they were looking for guidance on exactly where their property line was.
That's the risk someone takes if they want to trim it, and they mess up. It's a big penalty.
Is that something we could provide as information on exactly? No.
No, they'll probably have better access to all their survey information.
But if the trees are hanging over into their, there's that one little strip that is like kind of no man's land that they're just not sure, um, but...
They should talk to their own attorneys.
But they, you think that they could trim it? You suspect that they could trim it if...
As long as they're hanging over their property line.
Can we just touch on that, uh, your city school experience? Chip, at meeting last meeting, at the meeting when you were here, we had a ordinance proposal, did we not?
One way during school hours.
So, uh, is your, is your recommend, recommendation to table that?
My, our recommendation is that the city school increase their signage and communication with families. In our opinion, they're doing a really good job. In our opinion, they're doing a really good job with sometimes challenging drivers who make their own rules. So let's let the city school do what they've done. They've already started to increase the signage. I think one thing that we need to enforce is residents may not put their personal property in the roadway, which magnifies the problem because it decreases the space where people can drive. So the resident that brought concerns is putting her trash cans and cones and all the things in the road, which should be, we should remind her of the ordinances, and then we should give her fines if she's going to continue to do that because it's a problem. It's a safety issue. So I think we table it, we ride it out. We did not see a huge issue that, like, she feels it's a huge issue. Lindsay was down there in the morning, and the traffic flow was actually, for the amount of kids that are getting dropped off, was very good. There was never a time that the residents were not able to leave their driveway. So our recommendation is we just wait and see.
And is your recommendation, based on the traffic you saw, we can eliminate busing?
Yeah.
Is that your?
No. No, but that would save a lot of money. No.
Okay, are you set, Trudy?
Yeah, there's nothing else, right, Lindsay?
I think that was everything.
Okay.
Thank you both for your work on that, on both of those.
Three quick ones, one in my ward, two not in my ward. I'll start out with the one in my ward first. The new building that Marie just moved into, I'm a little disappointed in the appearance of that flat piece in front. It looks like just a piece of wood there that's going to eventually weather and look like crap. And I don't ever recall seeing that. You know what I'm talking about, Marie? Right in the front, if you're facing it right from Newton Street, you look at the building, there's this great big piece of wood that is part of the decking. It looks like, and it's not painted or anything. And having said that, if you go down to the building that is next to Woody, Midas, on the Maple Street side, there is two by six slats going down the side of that building. None of those look like they're painted. They're just going to weather and look like trash in the next couple of years. I don't know why the developers decided to do that on both those buildings, but it's very disappointing. The rest of the buildings look good.
Kind of dovetail on that. There's a large pine tree there as well with a pile of concrete dirt. At the Reed Commons as well.
Which one? The new one, the Reed Commons?
Yeah. There's a pine tree, Marty, you know what I'm talking about. There's a whole pile of debris. I think it's mostly concrete slabs that, and it could do some weed whacking as well. Thank you for bringing that up.
If you look at the building, I mean, it's really, it really sets, makes it unsightly for that nice building. And the same thing with the one down on Lake Street next to Midas and Maple. I did talk to Chris Wood for a little while, and he has said he has not had one problem there.
That's great.
Not a problem. And I would think that he would be the one that would see the most down there, and he's reported no problems. So that's good, I think, for everybody. The other thing is the second parking lot and the courthouse on Lake Street. The abutments where the signs are, the meters were, are all overgrown. It looks like trash, that whole parking lot. If that could just get cleaned up, I don't know if it's Keith's responsibility or the city's responsibility, but it really looks terrible. And that's in our downtown. You go into the courthouse.
Keith owns it.
Keep going in. The abutment right there that separates the city portion from Keith's portion is all overgrown. It really looks terrible. There's glass all over the place. There's in Keith's portion of the parking lot, there's been at least two cars there that are flat tires that have been there for at least 60 or 90 days. I think when my wife came back from Florida and we went to Nemo's, that car is there, and it's still there. So it's really a trashy looking place for our downtown.
Who's responsible for that, removing the cars?
Well, I'm just bringing it up, it's not my ward, but it looks like crap.
Tim, thank, jumping ahead to you. Also, some of the store owners are reporting in the Park Mobile spot that some of Keith's tenants are using some of the spots and staying there long term. Now, they could be paying all day, every day, but I doubt it, so.
What lot was that, Chuck? In the courthouse lot?
Yeah, where the Park Mobile spots are.
Not up front in the non-Park Mobile, but in the back in the Park Mobile.
And by the way, Park Mobile.
It's going good?
Loving it, loving it.
Everyone I talk to loves Park Mobile. The first two spots seem to be Park Mobile, too.
But they got to have some availability, right? There can't be people parking there not paying, and then be no enforcement.
Yeah, that's, that's. He said the summer was, Dana said the summer was pretty good. You know, probably attributed a few, people are on vacation, the court probably doesn't do as much business, but as soon as business started rocking and rolling again, turned into a disaster.
So does he want the first two to be Park Mobile?
Yeah.
How about the other businesses there?
I haven't talked to them.
If he wants them to be there, he should talk to his neighbors. I mean, we'd love them to be Park Mobile, right? So.
It's only one hour. I mean, you can still do Park Mobile and do a free section. I mean, the key is, you can't, I mean, I think the back lots, too, should be two hours, that's it. And you can't park there for another two hours.
About six months.
Right. I mean, because it's, we don't, those aren't there for court. Those are there for our businesses. So I don't, there's, shouldn't be able to go past two hours, then you have to move. I mean, no one's having lunch at. You can still do Park Mobile.
So we enforce that. We enforce the parking in there. You have people, though, that work at the passport center that buy passes to park there. And they pay for buses to park there and are able to park there. So the enforcement will go through, and if they have a pass.
In that front 14 spot or whatever many it is?
Everything except for the four that are marked for timed parking in the city lot are a combination of Park Mobile or pass holders, similar to the parking garage you can park. You can be a transient parker and park by the hour, or you can purchase a monthly or annual pass to park there.
See, I guess what I'm suggesting is those spots, right as you pull in, you know, the end at Nemo's or whatever, the parking, the driveway before that, those all should, those probably shouldn't be pass holder spots. They should be two hours max spots for people going in and out of the businesses.
That takes away from the greatness of Park Mobile, because you can be anywhere and go on your phone and be able to increase the amount of time.
But, so different communities don't allow that in every spot. Like you can go to Burlington, and if you're parking by the park downtown, those are quick spots. They're Park Mobile, but in that case, they do 30 minutes. Once you're 30 minutes in that spot, because they want those spots moving, you can't, you can't park in that spot again for another 24 hours. So you're still using the quality of Park Mobile. I'm not debating that, but I'm saying that no one's eating lunch at Nemo's more than two hours. You know what I mean? Like, these are things that we want that spot to turn. We don't, we want to make, we don't park long term in the garage. Not long term where people are trying to get in and out of businesses.
Well, it should be fine so long as the federal government's close.
Tim, do you think this is something that should be turned over to the Public Safety Committee?
Yes, yeah, yeah. They don't have, they're not doing much.
I think the finance team needs to take this one.
Tim, do you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
All right, so let's do our warrants and minutes.
We'll do it.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from 9:08:25.
Second.
Motion second. Any improvements, amendments, changes? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
I'll motion to approve the warrants at 9:30:25.
Your second?
Second.
Motion from Trudy, seconded by Chad to approve warrants of 5:30:25. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Last thing we have is we would like to present a flat to you, Marie. I'll read, and then hopefully we can get a photo of all, everyone. So the honorable Marie Basset, Ward 3, Alder Person, St. Almond City Council. In sincere gratitude for the dedicated service, assistance, guidance, and outstanding leadership you provided to the citizens of St. Almond for eight years. Your efforts on the city council have had a significant impact on our community and will be felt for years to come. You have shown what it means to be involved in your community and set an example to be followed in the future and cherished by those of us that were fortunate enough to experience it ourselves. From your friends and colleagues on the St. Almond City Council and in city hall, we would like to present this to you for your service. We'll have Dom take a call.
For sure, it's been a pleasure, Marie.
Move in a little bit. Yeah, Marie, get next to them.
That'll go in the newsletter.
I think you're stealing your car out there. We'll miss you.
She said she'd still come for the public safety meetings.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Marie. Good luck in retirement.
Yeah, retirement, yeah.